Meeting will be held in a hybrid fashion with the opportunity for both in-person attendance and remote participation in accordance with chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which extended the governor's March 12th, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. MGL 30A 20 until March 31st, 2023. That's right.
I'm sorry, I have to update. I didn't realize. I have to update that. It has been extended again. So this is all very legal.
March, like next year, right? 2024? Is it March 2024? It's extended. It's extended until a date that we can't tell you right now. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public will, with particular interest in any specific item on the agenda, should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. For in-person attendance, the town of Deerfield will host the meeting in the main meeting room, Deerfield Municipal Offices, with remote participation.
Excellent. That was lovely, Rachel.
Twenty twenty-five. That's what I thought. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, um, with a reminder that right now our meeting guidelines for the business meeting are speaking one at a time, following our Deerfield Code of Conduct, be respectful, considerate, courteous, and also concise, non-repetitive, and recognized by the chair, although we might need some recognition by the vice chair when she comes because it is a little challenging for me in Zoom land here. So, board members in attendance, uh, Rachel Blaine.
Rachel Blaine here.
Emily Gaylord.
Emily Gaylord here.
Kathy Witroba.
Kathy Witroba here.
Kathy Sylvester.
Kathy Sylvester here.
Andrea Liebson.
Andrea Liebson here.
Emily Wolf cool here and um, when Denise Mason comes, we'll then just really have a super majority, super quorum, but we're, we're set now. Um, minutes. Uh, we did have some, you know, logistical formatting things that Amy, thank you very much for pushing that out tonight. Or excuse me, today. Um, are there any other for uh, February 6th? And thank you also, Rachel for doing this. February 6th, are there any issues of substance not formatting that people need to um, request changes to? If, if so, or if not, we could have a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes of February 6th, 2023.
Thank you. And a second?
I second that. Kathy Witroba.
Thank you, Kathy. Any further discussion? So since I'm the one making a roll call vote necessary this time, um, we'll go around the table and now we will make note that uh, our vice chair Denise Mason is, is here. Emily Gaylord.
February.
Emily Gaylord, yes.
Kathy Witroba.
Kathy Witroba, yes.
Kathy Sylvester.
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Andrea Liebson.
Andrea Liebson, yes.
Uh, Denise Mason.
Denise Mason, yes.
Uh, Rachel Blaine.
Rachel Blaine, yes.
Emily Wolf cool, yes. So the minutes of uh, February 6th are approved. And how about the minutes for March 6th? Um, again, anything of substance, um, uh, thank you, Amy, for connecting, correcting some of the formatting issues. Maybe I'll have a motion and then we can have discussion. Or i- is there anything of substance for those minutes?
No, alright. May I ask a question? The um, I was not present, but I did watch the video. How does one um, note that in the minutes?
My, no, my understanding is that you need not be present in order to vote to accept the minutes if you have in fact read the minutes and you did super work by watching the video. So should be fine. Thank you. So let's see, can we have a, did somebody move? We don't think yet. Did we move to?
That we approved the March 6 minutes. Emily Gaylord.
Thank you, Emily. Second.
I second it. Kathy Sylvester.
Thank you, Kathy. Uh, any further discussion? Um, alright, uh, Rachel Blaine.
Rachel Blaine, yes.
Uh, Denise Mason.
Denise Mason, yes.
Andrea Liebson.
Andrea Liebson, yes.
Kathy Sylvester.
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Kathy Witroba.
Kathy Witroba, yes.
And Emily Gaylord.
Emily Gaylord, yes.
Emily Wolf cool, yes. So the minutes are approved simultaneous, simultaneous. Unanimously. It's been a long day with toddlers. Um, so all business, we have our public hearing continuation um, of sunny days, site plan review and um, uh, we can make note of the guests who are attending. If you could identify yourself. Please.
Good evening, everybody. I'm John Furman, on the engineered record uh, with VHB.
Thank you.
Muted, Ken.
I'm Ken Boquillan, owner of the property.
Thank you.
And Chris Chamberlain, Berkshire Design Group, we're the peer reviewer on behalf of the town.
Thank you very much and welcome to all three of you. Um, so as we are continuing, really appreciate the work that has been done in between meetings and um, maybe Mr. Furman, if you'd like to uh, begin with the discussion and then Mr. Chamberlain, you can um, join in.
Sure, be happy to. Uh, so just uh, kind of uh, where we've been since the last meeting. Uh, last Friday, Ken and myself attended a site walk with three members of the planning board. We were able to walk around and uh, we had imported the site plan into our ArcGIS software. And using our handheld phone, we were able to walk the property to the corners of each building. So uh, while we're there, you could kind of look around and you could see the trees that would be left and get an idea of the uh, of the, the, the development. Uh, also, uh, the initial peer review uh, comment letter from Berkshire Design had two parts. It had a zoning part and it had a stormwater part. Uh, at the last meeting, we had yet to tackle the stormwater. We've had two meetings with uh, Lucy and Chris from Berkshire Design. Our engineer uh, has gone through uh, and addressed the comments. Our intent on that is to kind of work through and uh, the remaining comments and get a formal submittal back to the town in Berkshire Design. Addressing the stormwater so that we can e- enter a dialogue and get these wrapped up uh, for the, for the next meeting. There are a handful of other comments that we are addressing at the same time, uh, replacing the uh, the uh, one parking space which we inadvertently uh, deleted, adding uh, three um, uh, EV charging uh, stations to the uh, the campus, one at the uh, testing lab and two at the cultivation building. Uh, and then uh, we are also uh, in our conservation commission uh, hearing. We received comments from the DEP. Uh, Berkshire Design has received those as well. So it's extremely advantageous that we have the same peer reviewer. Uh, so we can kind of work both uh, commissions and boards together uh, as we address the comments and you all get the same documents. Uh, so uh, last Tuesday, which was the cutoff of getting information to the board for this meeting, we submitted a, a letter that can, it contains some supplemental information. And that was at the request of the board to uh, who had asked for more specificity on some of the items. Um, so if possible, I'd like to share my uh, screen uh, to kind of walk through some of these things and show you what we had and a answer some questions or you put those items to rest. Alright.
Uh, before you start sharing, if anyone, if any of you need to move your chairs so that you can see the screen, please feel free.
And Annalee, you're muted.
Mr. Chamberlain, is there anything you'd like to um, say before we go to the screen share?
Um, no, I think that, that was a good summary. Uh, you know, at this point, we haven't seen the revised plan set or stormwater report. So we're anxious to dig into that when it comes in. Um, and you know, as we go through these more zoning related comments, uh, we have to, to chime in at the appropriate times.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Furman.
So we'll start with the uh, the cover letter that we submitted because this really kind of has the four items that we were uh, looking at. So when we started having a discussion last meeting about the traffic study and we had mentioned that uh, the traffic counts that we had based our study on were taken from a 2016 MASTOT counting station and then they were increased by percentage every year uh, to the current year. And this was done um, because of the situation we are ha- we have with COVID. Where uh, roadways are seeing less traffic because more people are working from home. And the board had asked that we take traffic counts to just to show that the assumption that we made is, is valid. So uh, the two things, so attachment A to this letter contains the actual traffic counts we receive from our vendor. And when you look at those, it's four numbers I have highlighted here. So from the actual counts, the northbound volumes on five and 10, 3,575 average trips per day in the northbound, 3,594 uh, in the southbound uh, direction. So that now converting over and looking at the counts we did from 2016 and growing them, uh, our analysis was based on 9,019 for the northbound and 6,802 for the southbound. So what this basically does is confirms that the assessment that we, we performed was based on a higher volume of traffic. Uh, we uh, the conclusions in that report said that we're not anticipating that there are going to be any off-site improvement issues needed because of that. So since we are now experiencing less traffic, that statement uh, still holds.
Alright, um, planning board, maybe at the, at the end of each of these sections, um, are there any questions uh, for Mr. Furman or Mr. Chamberlain on uh, like traffic study?
Uh, no, but John, I'm sorry, would you mind, or Mr. Furman, I'm sorry. Would you mind um, just collapsing the comments field so we can zoom in a little bit more, especially for those um, residents that are in the audience with us? It's definitely not because of that.
No, sure. Not because we're old. There we go.
How's that?
Thank you very much.
Alright.
Um, do appreciate that you did the updated um, traffic numbers. Any other questions? And Denise, you may need to um, call on people because I, I definitely can't see with the small screen.
Okay.
Okay. Tree, tree preservation?
Alright, so tree preservation was the uh, second item that I had listed as a, a note from the meeting. We are asking for a waiver of the tree inventory. Uh, and uh, we currently do not have a, a landscaping plan uh, for the, for the project. So uh, what we uh, had provided, let me see, I think it's this one. How do I get to it here? Okay, so this is the overall plan that was submitted as part of the, the documents. Nothing has changed on this plan. Um, except that the tree line that is on that plan, I've turned to red. And one of the comments uh, that came from the last planning board meeting was that we really don't know where the, how, what you're clearing. You're saying five acres, but we don't know where it is. So this, this red line is shown on the design plans that we submitted. And this is our proposed uh, tree clearing limit. So inside of this line is a, uh, is about 4.95 acres. So we're just rounding up to five. So that's this, so every, everything between these red lines is the areas that we are going to be uh, clearing. Um, we had mentioned before, we have two wellland crossings. One is here. The other is here. Uh, the members of the, the board that were at the uh, site walk actually got to walk through those to see what they look like. They look a lot more impressive on this plan than they do in the field. They're really just minor uh, minor crossings. Um, so to support the request for the tree inventory, should keep track of which one I had open. There we go. So uh, we went and did some research on the US Department of Agriculture. That what we ended up finding is that in 2012, they provided some um, analysis that classified uh, trees within an area based on uh, the density. So for the, this site here, which we classified as a medium density forest, we're anticipating 905 trees will be cut. And what is uh, unique about this is that the trees themselves, uh, the front area of the site has been cleared previously. And most of the growth from the right of way line into, I, I'm going to say about a third to a half of the way in are small growth trees. They're probably six to eight to 10 inch diameter. When you get to the back of the site, the size of the trees get a little bit uh, bigger. Uh, but they're not, th- this is not a pristine forest that is full of uh, you know, natural oaks and, and um, and trees that are very large in, in area or in, in diameter. We have some of those in there, but it's not the predominant. Um, not the predominant uh, characteristic of this, of this site. We also have 28 acres uh, for the, the, the site. This thing's in the way here. Move it, alright. And so what we're showing, we don't show um, the, the entire boundaries of the site. But this is the first parcel. This is the one that we're doing the development on. And the second parcel here uh, which is just to the north. So the two of these parcels total 28 acres. And all we're really intending to do at this point is just to clear these five. So that's 23 acres of the remaining site that'll, that'll remain. Uh, we have no plans at this point uh, to, oh, clear cut them, to open cut them. It'll just remain uh, as it is. From a, a landscape, landscaping perspective, what uh, we've done is we've consulted with Ken. And we've consulted a landscape architect. And you can see that we are only cutting these trees to the point that we are needing it for development or for grading. What's not shown on this plan are the limits of grading. So for instance, um, between the basin here, this is the outline of the basin. Uh, between this line here and this area down here, we have grading in here. So uh, that's why it looks like there's blank areas and you might say, well, let's bring this in and get it closer here. We can't because we have that grading line there. So what our, our updated plan set is going to be is within these detention basin areas, we'll be spotting some um, some river birch trees. A landscape architect that we team with on a regular basis has suggested that because that river birch has a characteristic where it likes to get wet and then dry out. And they will, they'll function very well in here. So we'll, we won't um, overly plant these because as a stormwater management feature, we have to get in there. We have to maintain them. Any sediment that builds up in there, we have to be able to clean it out. But we will add enough so that they're, they're uh, you know, uh, dressed up and that they're not just bland uh, 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 fields of grass, I guess, if you would. So, so with those two items, that's what we have to address the uh, the tree preservation area. This is approximately what we're estimating we will take out. And then um, uh, that the plan with the red line shows the limits. Uh, the erosion control barrier goes along that red line. So that is conservation commission requires us to stake that li- limit of work with the barrier. So no work goes on the outside of it. So wants to prove that's where the erosion control barrier will be and then that's our project.
Thank you. Um, planning board comments on the trees?
Um, yeah, this is Denise Mason. When we went through, I mean, I was anticipating a much denser forest, but it really wasn't. And I think most of the trees were, were really tinier. As I said, they were scrappy trees. I mean, there were, there are a number of large ones, but you know, I mean, I, I didn't count them. There weren't as many large ones as I anticipated. And I think Mr. Furman had also stated that it looked like it had been logged in the past because they were not mature trees. They were very small. And you know, some of the ones, um, the evergreen trees, they're, they're ready to go anyway. Cause I think the evergreen trees that were there typically don't have a very deep root system. So they're prone, prone to
topple.
toppling over in a storm. So it wasn't, I mean, I was, I felt pretty confident about what their plans were with the trees at this point. I don't know.
Oh, Emily.
Thanks to you. Uh, Mr. Furman, can you go back to the tree line image because I wanted to just point something else out to the folks that couldn't go to the site visit? So if you see where the driveway is marked, um, what it's doing, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Ken, or uh, Mr. Furman. Um, the state owns like a big chunk of that parcel, right? Along five and 10. So we can't clear that anyway. Correct? So it's
Correct.
Have to walk through, when we walked it, um, we all wore our good boots. Um, you have to walk through quite a bit of tree cover to even access where the site is going to be, which means from the road. I don't even know if the building's going to be visible. It's just going to be what it looks like now. So I think in terms of building something of this scale and preserving the look and feel of how five and 10 is right now, it comes pretty close as, as we can get it.
That's good to know. Um, I certainly appreciate that um, most of them are, as you say, sort of scrappy trees with only the larger ones at the a- at the back of the property. And potentially as Denise, as you say, that um, you know, they may be sort of old and prone to toppling over anyway. We do have a fairly specific, our, our bylaws, quite specific when we're asking about the tree uh, replacement, the, the tree cutting, you know, within the, within the property itself. I'm not talking about the inventory. When we talk about trees greater than 19 inches in diameter at a 60, 60 inch height. And um, as I, as I think of precedent and what we've also requested of other applicants when they have requested um, a waiver from uh, replacing those trees. Uh, I mean, uh, 905 trees also out of approximately 5,000 is 18%. I mean, that's in my accounting days, anything greater than 10% is a material number. So I guess um, I would just still like to say that if there could be something more for me at least to hold on to in terms of the number of the 19 inch diameter trees that you're talking about removing, that would give me some um, better confidence in, in granting that replacement waiver.
Uh, so.
Yeah, and that you can return to. You don't need to answer that now.
Yeah. So, so if I'm understanding that your request, you would still like anything 19 inches in diameter and greater located in, or inventory?
No, I, I mean, we will still need to grant, we will still need to address basically as I understand it, there's two waivers. One is the tree inventory overall, right?
Right.
And then, and then secondly, there is the issue of replacing trees. The more mature trees that are 19 inches of, in diameter or greater at a, at a 60 inch height. And that's the part that um, feels a little bit more nebulous to me. I think of the, what you have shown, at least as far as I'm concerned, and the folks who went on the site visit are reiter- are corroborating. Um, you know, I'm not sure that, I, I don't think a, a total, I don't imagine a total tree inventory is, is warranted.
Well, I, I, I think Ken can uh, jump in and um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I, I think the intent of our request is that we have 28 acres of wooded area. And uh, we are proposing to not touch uh, 23 acres of it and just leave it as it is in exchange for doing a, a replacement uh, program for, for trees. The, the bylaw that you have seems to work really well for a site that's being uh, completely uh, clear cut. And that's not what we're trying to. You can tell by the tree cutting limits that we have. We brought this in as tight as we can. In some areas, we're right up against the, the wetland line. Like in this area, we're in the, the majority of the other ones, we've tried to stay 25 feet away, but we do have areas where we've gotten close. Um, so our, our intent in, in the request for the waiver would be that in exchange for planting a replacement tree, uh, we can certainly do the uh, the, the river birch as kind of an aesthetics type of, of planting. But the intent would be that we would not do uh, the replacement value as stated in the bylaw because we have so much that we're preserving.
Hmm, I understand. And that's a good rationale. I appreciate that. It's just there's that piece. Are we talking about there's five trees that are older, bigger trees? Or are we talking about 100? I, I, I have no idea of the scope with that. And we have requested of other applicants that they, you know, give us a little, you know, if we're, if we're, if we're asking for a waiver. So the, the planning board may decide that's not important and this is just my opinion, but um, that's, I would like to have a little bit more understanding as to what we're talking about with cutting down the mature trees.
Excuse, this is Andrea. So given, given the location, given the fact that there will be a um, uh, like a curtain of trees around everything, around everything. Um, I don't think it's a typical building site where trees are gone, a building's put in. And then you just see this building. There will be trees buffering all the views as far as we could tell from the um, from the site visit.
But.
Dramatic, it was, it was dramatic. I mean, the noise from the street was gone, uh, including from 91. Once we were in the center of the um, of the building area. So it's not going to look denuded of trees um, based on what the trees are there and what we could see that would be maintained. Maybe rest a little more assured, um, Annalee.
Thank you.
This is Rachel Blaine. It may not be simply though, the nature, it, it may be also just the environmental impact of large mature trees. So we, and since we weren't on the visit that, that I think is part of what we're concerned about is just the environmental impact of losing large mature trees. I mean, we just lost one too. We, I just went lost one to uh, to the natural, the resources. I mean, trees go down, I get it. But that, I think that was part of the, what Annalee's tagged in here.
And there certainly were not 100. I mean, I, you know, I didn't count, count them. I didn't take my tape. Maybe I should have. But I'd say at the mo- most would be 20 trees. And I don't even think there are that many.
Yeah, I, I'd like, I'd like to thank the ladies for coming out and walking the property with us last Friday. And I was just going to say, there's definitely less than 25 large trees that we're going to cut down out of everything. Um, and they were predominantly in the cultivation building area, um, which is in the center of the property.
Thank you. We'd like to thank the, the boys for taking us around too.
Can I just, this is uh, Kathy Witroba. I would just like to add something too. So, I mean, we're not, we're not talking about the Lorax here. We, I understand that, but not all trees are created equal, right? And these large trees are their ability to exchange
Right.
carbon dioxide and oxygen, right? And so our wooded areas become really important, especially in an area like this where there's a lot of exhaust and a lot of traffic and a lot of need for those trees to breathe for us so that we're not breathing that as well, right? So I, 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 I don't think this is an alarming situation. Again, it's not, we're, we're not it's, I do just think it's worthy of what we're expecting in other areas. And um, the value of those adult trees, it's, it's, they're not all created equal. It takes a long time for a tree to be really functionally working on the behalf of the humans in the space they are growing in. Thank you.
So uh, Madam Chair, you had mentioned that, you know, that, that was your opinion and you didn't know how the other board members felt. Could we maybe put this for a vote and see what what the, the uh, uh, the directive is moving forward, whether we go out in this area and locate these trees?
Well, I, I'm, I'm a little, I'm, I'm, let's see. To think for a minute about doing a, a vote, I mean, um, you certainly do have a follow-up in a number of areas. An estimate is fine also. Again, you know, something that feels like a ballpark of what it is that you're asking us to waive.
So uh, you know, one thought that might be a middle ground that I had is if there are, you know, define a representative area and do a, a count in a limited area, uh, just sort of like, like John, like you estimated the, the 900 some trees based on the agricultural records, you know, if, if there's a representative, I don't know what the right size is. Um, um, that's small enough, that account is reasonable. That's also, you know, able to be extrapolated. It does sound like the large trees are clustered in, in one particular area. So um, choosing that area may, may uh, you know, perhaps there may need to be two locations or carefully chosen. So it's actually representative, but that may be a way to avoid having to go through the exercise of actually counting while getting a reasonable estimate.
Yeah.
We, we can, we can assure you that there's, that there's definitely less than 25 large trees um, that will be cutting down. There's a lot of swamp, swamp maple and just really smaller trees like this big around. Um, the front has pretty much zero. Um, it's just in the part of the cultivation area that where there's some pine trees um, or hemlock. So I'm not sure what they There were, there's some pine trees, um, or hemlock, I'm not sure what they are, what are they, John, back there?
There, there's, there's a lot, the most of it's pine.
Yeah, and, and as we went on the walk, most of those trees in the last storm, a lot of the branches had snapped off and they were laying on the ground. Um, we walked right through it, so yeah, there's definitely less than like twenty-five trees in this entire five acres that are um. A twenty-one inches or bigger that will actually be cutting. Um, if you go farther back and farther to the north, um, there's thousands of trees that are big, and that's why we stayed out of those areas.
That estimate of twenty or twenty-five. Um, is help, is extremely helpful to me, thank you.
And I, I feel a little bit um, soothed maybe because it's a high-performance building. And it's not burning copious amounts of fossil fuels or other things that would have a huge impact on our environment as well. Um, so I, I mean, not to discount, and Kathy's absolutely right, that um. Especially in an area like this surrounded by highway, trees are absolutely critical. And I do feel better knowing that we're not gonna be putting even more fossil fuel and carbon into the atmosphere.
And there's an offset, is Rachel, there's an offset of the other property, I do appreciate that too. And I think we just, we don't wanna, we, we've made a bylaw, we made it for right. Not the least of which was to, to retain a rural nature, wooded nature of the area, so, but it also is for the environment impact of trees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Herman, I'm not sure who I should um, address this to, approximately how many river birch trees? I mean, you said that they really absorb a lot of water, so I'm wondering how, how many? I mean, you, you said you don't want to densely plant them to have access, but.
Uh, I, yeah, I, I, I would have to really consult our, our landscape architect. But I don't see us getting any closer than like twenty feet uh, on center with the trees. Because once the sediment gets in there, we have to get a machine in there, small bobcat to be able to move around and scoop out the sediment that's in there. And you're gonna want some area uh, for that maneuverability. So uh, what we're planning to do is to, is part of the updated plan set that we're having. Is to show in these areas here where these basins are, are the, the river birch. So there's nine basins, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. And so those are the areas where we'd be concentrating them. So I mean, even if we did six uh, trees in each basin, that's fifty something trees, that's more than we're cutting down. So you know, the math is that way, you're not, you're not gonna get six trees in a, in a small basin like this one, so.
So perhaps could we get that in writing? Like, these are the kind of specifics that I think we've been asking for is, we're probably going to be taking down fewer than twenty-five mature trees. We'll be planting this many river birch, this is how the math works out, I think like those are the numbers we'd really love to see.
Sure, well, the, the, the plantings we would have on an updated plan, so you'd have those in front of you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think we, we would uh, recommend a, a planting plan. Um, that comes from the landscape architect, uh, the, the river birch are maybe okay. Um, but that, we do have a little bit of concern with how wet the bottom of those basins are gonna be throughout the spring. River birch like wet feet for a little while, um, but given that the bit, bottom of the basins are right at groundwater. Uh, they're probably gonna be totally saturated for a few months, and that's uh, iffy with river birch, really with, with a lot of mature trees. Um, so I think that, that just being clear, that a landscape architect really understands the environment here. Um, there, there are actually very few large trees that'll, that'll do well, totally saturated. Um, and then the other concern we would have is that the basins are, um, in the current plan, gonna be lined with an impermeable liner. Uh, but if that's then pierced with several trees, there's, there's a, a give and take on that, so that, that's something that we'd be mindful of.
Thank you.
Yes, you correct me if I'm wrong, John, but we, we can't plant trees in the basins. Um, they're lined with clay, you're not allowed, that, that's, that's the opposite of the concept of what we're doing. I think there's a, so, a few places around um, the edges, I mean, right over here, I can't move my cursor. But I think there's a couple of places around the edges. Um, but in reality, um, we're sticking to the spirit of the law and we're. Uh, uh, and we're trying to like uh, cut as few as possible. So doing that, it does leave us a bunch of room to plant, you know, fifty more trees, um, cause we're cutting bare minimal. I mean, if you wanted us to cut more trees and, and plant, well, that's, that's sort of against the, you know, the spirit of the, of, of what it's about too. Um, so I think we're gonna put some trees around the edges and John will um, you know, submit a landscaping plan. But I doubt there's room for fifty, I think maybe we might get twenty, you know, river birch on the edges of these uh. You know, these areas, but I, if, as you see, we've cut down apps, we're gonna cut down absolutely bare minimum. Just to make the project work.
Certainly, I think as Emily mentioned, if we can have as many specifics as you're able to estimate, that would be very helpful. If you wanna go on, John, I think we've probably exhausted.
All right, uh, so the, the next uh, uh, item was, was basically responding to one of the peer review comments. From the first review regarding the lighting plan and if it complied with the uh, uh, the zoning bylaw. So we sent the bylaw to the lighting designer and they have updated the, the lighting plan to the one that was submitted with this correspondence. Uh, they're all LED fixtures, there's a total of sixteen of them, and they're either single head or, or double head uh, fixtures. Uh, because we're so far back, we really don't have any light spillage over the uh, uh, the property line. Except for the driveway, we have one light right here where we really need it, because as you're coming out the driveway. Um, you know, we wanna light that up, this is gonna be an area that's elevated, it's gonna have guardrails on the side. But we got, have adequate lighting here to allow safe passage. But when you get to the roadway, you can see that we're quite a bit back, uh, and they're already zero. So it's just enough to, to, to uh, provide some guidance over here. Our property lines are really as so far away that uh, zooming up on all of them, we have zeros pretty much everywhere. Going out of it, our fixture is an LED fixture, the height is limited to fourteen feet as per your bylaw. Uh, and so I think the uh, the, the narrative that we provided in the cover letter basically says that we comply with that. I also asked for uh, the designer to give me the, the equipment specifications for the lighting. So that's what it's going to look like, it's an LED fixture. Um, and then these are all the specifics, uh, I think there's forty-two pages. Uh, in this specification on, on the pole, the inanization of the, of the metal, the light spread, the light bulbs that are in there. Everything that's in there, so there's more information here than you probably need, but the, so that's, that takes care of that. And the last item, oh, I'm sorry, if there's any questions on that.
Any other questions on lighting?
Yeah, the, uh, so I would just give some context, uh, we work with Apex Lighting a lot um, on our own projects. And they're usually very careful with their lighting design, um, I'm not a lighting expert, but looking at the, the photometric plan. Um, I mean, it looks like they've got enough light for safety, it's spread relatively well. And I think on this site critically, um, while the property lines are distant. Uh, the sensitive environmental areas are really close, uh, but in general, the lights are shedding from the edges of the site toward the center. And I saw a lot of zeros and zero point ones uh, right along that, that woods boundary, which, which is important, I think.
Excellent, any other question, any questions on this from the planning work? Okay, we know you're also managing security too, so that's often a challenge there, give and take with the lighting. All right, building orientation.
Yeah, so uh, this last one is information that was actually provided directly from Sunny Days. So I may ask Ken to kind of walk through it, but there's a couple uh, uh, areas that were in that submittal. And he provided information on the cultivation technology and the efficiency, uh, the sustainability of the building, the odor mitigation. And the technologies pertaining to the cultivation and, and grow process. Uh, one of the uh, items that uh, were in the back of one of these were the renderings. And Ken, I, I, I don't know if you've got a chance to see them, did you guys see me flop screens? Yes, you're looking at a rendering, okay, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. This is the uh, rendering of the, the actual dispensary building, so it has a, a, a black front. With the wood shingles, uh, kind of an exterior post and beam uh, type of roof design. There's another uh, rendering from the side that kind of shows, this is the entrance to the building, and this is the design. The entry for the uh, the cultivation building kind of mirrors this, it has a couple posts like this with an extended roof. That building is, you know, is it's twenty-six thousand square feet, is a, a larger metal type building uh, for, for cultivation. But it, it carries components of this uh, design through to the uh, to the cultivation building. Uh, Ken, I didn't have one for the uh, testing building, I don't know if one's been developed yet or not.
We have not developed one, um, we just have the layout, it, it, it'll be a Butler building with a similar type of entrance to walk in. Um, but the rest of the building will be typical like the other side of this building.
Yeah, uh, so I just wanted to splash those up, uh, and those are, a, a version of these are included in this information that we submitted. Uh, for this section, so Ken, um, do you wanna walk through uh, these sections? Are you able to?
Can you pull up the?
Oh, hold on.
Yeah, um, I might mention to you, Ken, and this might be something for even our next meeting. And one of the things that I recently was brought forward to me is that the planning board is in fact the authority overseeing. The section of our bylaws that has to do with marijuana facilities in town. And you know, in general, the planning board really only cares about what happens outside of the building. We don't really, I mean, we like to know and we care about what's happening inside, but that's not our purview. Not quite the same with, potentially with the marijuana uh, oversight. So I'll just say that, I'm, I'm asking for some legal opinions on what do we have to, you know? What do we really have to do about with that? So in the meantime, there might be some more questions, or if you wanna be more superficial with what you're saying now is fine. But um, you got, you, you might wanna take a look at our bylaws that have to do with the marijuana. Facilities in town and planning board's role in that. We're, we're in, we're a little bit in the dark on that also, so anyway.
So, so be- before Ken actually answers that, so the initial submittal that uh, we put together. Um, had uh, all the components that followed that special permit uh, criteria. So all the information that the board asked for was included in, in the initial submittal. Uh, if you called during the first meeting, uh, Lucy from Berkshire Design thought that there were pages missing. Because the numbering in that submittal kind of skipped, and I explained that I had taken the information from Sunny Days. And I had broken it apart, so it actually went in accordance with the schedules and the sections in your bylaw. So you have everything from the marijuana special permit in that initial submittal for you to review. What this was, was uh, kind of in response to the comment about the building being highly efficient. And asking for more specificity for that, so I don't believe uh, Ken's gonna get into the actual process for growing and how they do things. But I think this pertains more to the equipment and the heat recovery and the energy recovery that's being part of that. And it's, again, it's in response to the quest of, of the board.
Thank you.
Mr. Herman, did you say that there was a rendering of the manufacturing building as well? Did you just show us the dispensary, did you show us both?
That was the two uh, renderings of the dispensary. Uh, I have not seen one for the, either the cultivation or the testing building. But we provided exterior elevations for those, they're not, they're not colored renderings like that.
We don't, we haven't been able to find those, the um, exterior elevations, all we have are site plans.
There is no rendering yet of um, the cultivation building or the third-party testing lab. Um, they are typical Butler buildings, so they will look like that, uh, similar to the other uh. You know, the, the right-hand side of the cultivation, uh, but we have not done a rendering of those buildings.
Okay, well, that's where we can't find it.
I, I just have a quick question too, this is Kathy Vitroba. So the third-party testing building, what's the third party, what's being tested? I don't think I understand the concept of what goes on in that building.
So um, we're not allowed, as Sunny Days isn't allowed to own a testing facility, obviously there's a conflict of interest there. Um, so we have a company confidence analytics out of Washington and California that um, that I've known for a long time. Because I operated my um, other facility in, in Se- in the Seattle area. Um, so they're, they're, they've been working with the, the town here, they're trying to get their HCA, so they will just. Uh, lease that building from us and they will operate their own company there. Um, and then that, that company will be testing product and employing people from, you know, the area and, and the state. Um, and just strictly, we will just own the building and be leasing it to them. The, the benefit for us is uh, w- we don't have to drive to Holyoke, or we don't have to drive, you know, down to Springfield to get our product tested. Um, it's, it's, it's much easier for us, and then the other big benefit too is they'll probably produce some, some um. Pretty high-paying jobs, people need to be skilled um, in those laboratories. So you know, there'll be people from the area that will be uh, able to get some pretty well-paying skilled jobs.
And they're testing for um, contaminants?
State testing, yeah, mandatory state testing.
All right.
Um, will you do manufacturing in the, in your other building, the ma- the growing building, grow, where's?
Yes, yeah, yeah, there will be manufacturing, cultivation and manufacturing.
In that same building?
Correct.
So uh, um, this was included as part of the initial submittal uh, in a separate directory. So what I can do is I can email this to Amy for the, the board members as well. But the, this is not our rendering, but it's the exterior elevations for the, that cultivation building. So this is the side of the building that is facing uh, Interstate ninety-one. And this is the side of the building that is uh, facing five and ten. So there's that entryway that I told you kind of mimics the entryway design that's on the, the dispensary. This is the southern um, view, this is a loading dock, which you can see in this door right here. So that door is on the side of this wall, and this entry here, you can see from the side, has the same elements as the. As the blushing, as the um, uh, dispensary building. And then this is the other side of the building, uh, that's the entry building that's further on the other side of the building. We have a delivery door, uh, kind of a mechanical room, and then there's two entry doors for uh, for space. Uh, for mechanics, but thi- this, I can send this in as part of thing, but it was already included in it. Uh, I don't have one of these yet for the uh, testing um, building. But we can, I can certainly see if we can come up something that give you an idea what it looks like.
The building will, the testing building will be the same shape, it's just much, much smaller. This is a twenty-six thousand square foot building, the testing lab is only five thousand.
Oh, five thousand, uh, can I just ask a quick question about a product? The product, it's Rachel, like, this is Ken, um, product shipping, will that, how much product? Like percentage-wise, are you gonna be shipping off-site and how much will you be selling in?
That's a great question, it depends on how much is bought locally. But uh, that's, depends on how much support we have. But um, in general, we plan on probably, i- i- our goal is to sell thirty percent of our product in our own dispensary. And then I've already forged some relationships with people in the Boston area and other clients that we're building facilities for that own dispensaries. So I, I'd say it's probably, where our goal is, you know, seventy, thirty, seventy percent um, in the Boston area, thirty percent locally. Uh, but that's really gonna depend on how much support we have from the local community.
I have one more question uh, regarding the third-party building, so the.
Kathy, is that Kathy Vitroba?
No, I'm sorry, so the building is owned by Sunny Days, you're leasing it out to a third-party company. But you're, you hold the liability for the building.
Yeah, we own the building, we just lease it to them.
Thank you.
So Ken, uh, how did you wanna go through uh, this, this document?
Well, after Annalee's comment, I'm not sure like how deep you wanna dig into it. Um, and that's, they can just tell me, I mean, I could take up an hours going through the, you know, efficiency of this building. Um, this is quite, you know, uh, extensive document that we gave. Um, I'm not sure how much they wanna know, other than, you know, we have a winter insulation package with this, it goes far above and beyond the, you know. Typical R-value that's required, um, that's so we can contain our, you know, our complete. Um that's so we can contain our, you know, our complete cultivation in there. So basically, we have a building inside a building. Um so we have a highly insulated winter package on this exterior of the building. We also use insulated uh freezer panels um which are hi- high R-value inside the building. So um as far as efficiency goes, it's it's extremely efficient. And and that aspect of the building.
I think in terms of uh, you know, not doing terribly, a big deep dive, but I know in with other public hearings, odor mitig- mitigation has been a large concern with the community. So maybe if you could address that to some.
Sure. Yeah, so um the building will have uh everything exiting the building, um any of the exhaust or um anything going out, like when we bring makeup air in, um just for for humans, uh for creature comfort areas. Um you know, that 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 air is all um run through a carbon filter. Um anything that exits is run through a carbon filter. Um these, these will be maintained per manufacturing specifications. Um and tha- they won't allow any smell to get outside our building. Um and and the law is that we can't have any smell um at the property line. Um that's, that's the state law. Um this building, as the ladies saw on the um the walk, is very much in the middle of a a a pretty good forest. You can't really see ninety-one, pretty hard to see the five-ten. Um so, you know, we're we're definitely to the spirit of the law and and the odor mitigation will be taken care of with these large charcoal filters um that that remove any kind of smell or particulates before it goes outside.
Thank you. Hmm, um other questions from the planning board? And then I think otherwise, our next steps really are, as you talked earlier, or or have communicated to some degree, Mr. Furman, that um only the drainage-related issues might be sort of more in detail at our next meeting. These were our more outstanding zoning issues, although Mr. Chamberlain and and Berkshire Design are still certainly following up on some of the peer review comments.
Our our hope is that between now and the next meeting, um Berkshire Design and VHP work out all the uh drainage issues so that the peer review letter can say that the items have have been addressed, and then we can provide you with as little or as much detail as you want on what the the system is. Um one of the things that uh we were struggling with right now is uh soil testing. Uh and um the 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 soil testing that was done was for the buildings, very consistent throughout the site. So one of the discussions that we had with uh with Chris is is a compromise to saying that we'll go out with a hand auger and we'll dig some shallow test pits because we're really only interested in the top three or four feet. And um if we can provide some results from that, uh Berkshire Design uh might have a basis for um supporting a request to say that once we have the site cleared and we get machinery out there, we do additional testing. Um but the hand augers would give us an idea of our, if our assumptions that we've made for the design are are correct or if they're way off. So we've agreed to do that. Uh we're probably gonna get out there this week and hand auger nine holes. I won't be doing it. My staff will be doing it, but uh it uh or.
I'll probably be doing it.
I I think as your peer reviewer, I think they should witness firsthand what the borings are, so they should be out there too.
I'll be, I'll be glad to come watch you dig.
So so that's, that's kind of the the motive for the next uh the next couple of weeks, is to really work through the stormwater. Uh get the data, and and at the same time, we're addressing the comments for the Conservation Commission because they really go hand in hand. They're both talking about the same thing. And that is kind of where we're at.
Okay, so I think um we do have a continuation form that I believe, Mr. Furman, you've already signed.
Yes.
And I'll be signing this week um to continue to our next meeting, which is, I believe, May sixth. Yes.
I just have, I'm sorry, I need to go back to the odor question. I just feel like, as someone who lives in this beautiful region of Western Massachusetts, where we have no shortage of dispensaries, there is an odor around all of them. And I'm just curious if there's a state law that's supposed to prohibit that. Is that just users in the parking lot? Or are you going to, like, how are we gonna manage that? Because I mean, you drive by any one of them and it smells like my college dorm room. Like, I don't know what to tell you.
You're talking about the dispensary now?
Well, just in general, the odors in general that are coming from the disp- yeah, the dispensary, really.
Yeah, I'm not seeing that.
You've never.
No. Multiple places in Northampton, no.
Gone to the dispensary in Northampton. I didn't even smell it inside the building.
I think that the grow facilities are the ones that we are most.
Yeah, there you go.
Users in the parking lot, I don't know if we can do any.
No, I know. Where it's coming from, because well, maybe I just have a very sensitive nose, but I don't think so.
No. Maybe, Ken, as you had talked about this, you said that there's a state requirement that uh beyond certain boundaries, there's no odor. Well, what if there is odor?
So I can assure you, if you're going to a dispensary or near a cultivation facility and you're smelling cannabis, um that is against the state regulation and law. Um there is no loitering. There is no public use of cannabis allowed. Um and at the property line, there shouldn't be any smell. So if there is, they're violating state law. It's it's that clear. Um and and we have designed, we've designed this facility. Um there will be no smell outside the cultivation building. We control all that with a automated building automation system, which is fully automated. Um and like I said, we scrub that air with carbon filters and get rid of it. So I can assure you, you won't be smelling any on our facility. Um and if there is somebody using uh the product in the parking lot, our security will be immediately escorting them off our property. Um and then once they get off our property, we don't have control of what they do. But if you're driving by a facility and you can smell it, they are violating state law.
You know, ju- just for clarification, th- this is Denise Mason. I ride my bike a lot in the summertime when some of the local farmers were growing hemp. That's what it smelled like. And I think people have this misconception that it's going to smell like that, which smells similar, but.
It doesn't out of the facilities.
No, it won't out of the facility, but when I was riding my bike down Stillwater Road, yeah.
So I, you just brought up, I'm sorry, this is Kathy, you, you brought up a good point, Ken. So you have your own security uh um on staff?
We have to, by state law, we have to have somebody making sure there's no loiter- loitering around. Um they're not security. They're not allowed to carry guns. We're not allowed to have it, you know, guns on this property. Um but it will be a person. If somebody's there loitering, tha- they're there to go ask them, please, can you keep it moving?
Sure. Thank you.
Cameras must pick up whatever we got going on out there, yeah.
Yeah. Regulated.
Perfect.
In terms of.
Thank you.
Impenetrability. That was, sorry, this is Rachel Blaine, but at the time that these laws were being established, there was so much around. And so it's all in there. It's all in the state code. It's not anything we have to worry about necessarily. Yes, it's.
I mean, it's, you know, I've been a farmer my entire life. Um raised cattle um in Connecticut since the early eighties. Um you know, when the farmer's out there cutting fifty acres of grass, nobody's complaining that it smells like cut grass. You know what I'm saying? So like, farmers have to graze crops. Um like she was saying, she drives down the road and smells the hemp. I mean, that's this is a farming community. This is farming. I can assure you, there won't be any smell from ours. But it's sort of weird sometimes, and I hear people talk about the smell. Well, they don't say anything about them making beer. They don't say anything about them making hay or corn. Um but they have to say something about cannabis because it's a new unknown product. So that's just my take on it. Um but I can, but I can assure you, this is uh control controlled environmental agriculture, CEA. This is indoor agriculture, and it's highly um technical and no smell will be getting outside of our building.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chamberlain?
Yes, and I could just give some perspective. I've I've uh myself worked on at least half a dozen projects with with cannabis cultivation. Generally uh would back up what Ken's saying there. There is a regulation, no odor at the property line. When I go to Holyoke and there, there are certain areas where I get a little waft, which are probably coming from some carbon filter that wasn't changed appropriately, but um when uh but if appropriately designed and maintained, uh what Ken's saying should be true. Um you know, one thing that uh Waitley's Board that was concerned about this uh issue on one of our projects, uh you know, simply wrote in a condition that the planning board, you know, if there was a complaint, the planning board reserved the right to to bring in an expert to to check up on them and you know, if there was odor present at the um at the property line to then, you know, require the applicant to take on some kind of study or means to correct it. Uh I think that's probably covered in your bylaw anyway, uh but they felt better explicitly putting it on as a condition. And at least my client had no problem with it because it was simply a condition that stated thou shalt follow the law.
Correct.
Thank you.
Um and then actually, one other thing that that perked my ears just a couple minutes ago, that may be a little bit of a technical issue. According to the bylaw, any permits issued here under shall be issued to the marijuana establishment owner. Um so, and this may be a question that the board needs to think about, is would the special permit apply to the third-party operator of the lab? Uh because the special permit typically goes with the use. Uh whereas the site plan review probably covers the building. Um so if that's a different licensee, then it may need to be a separate special permit. Um or there may be a means to cover that under this special permit if the board wants to. I I'm not totally clear on that.
Alright, thank you. We might have, we'll check that out. That's a good.
I think, I think, I think I can address this for you. So at the present time, confidence analytics has been in town, in talks with the town for a very long time. They haven't got any response. They can't even get an HCA um completed. Um we have alternate motives for that building. Um we're not positive they're gonna get an HCA and come here. And we're gonna, if that's the case, um we will be using that building for our own manufacturing purposes. Um where we might be making edibles in there, um since we don't have a lot of room in our cultivation for manufacturing edibles. So we don't really know yet, um if the town is gonna um issue that HCA. Um we we don't know what's going on. They haven't really had much contact with with confidence analytics. So I can assure you, if 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 that doesn't happen, we'll be using that ourselves. Um regardless, we own it. It's ours. We're going for the permit. Um and we'll be using it. Um if 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 they don't, if they don't lease it, we'll be using it ourselves.
Okay. Alright, Chris, well, thank you for it.
I have one more question re- uh relative to that then. So manufacturing that you would do, maybe you would do more if you had that building. Um would um confidence analytics, would they be testing other? Are, would they be a test site for other grow sites?
Yes, they'll be testing product from all over the state. They'll be sending out their truck and they go get sample, little samples, you know, like this big, and then they they bring them back and test them um for other, for for other places. Now, I can assure you um with the testing labs, uh the, this is the first lab that ever tested a legal sample of marijuana in the United States. Um they've been in business for over twelve years. They just received a license in California, um which is the hardest state to try to get a license. Um so they are, you know, they're a very reputable um group of people. Um I've used them for many years. Um they're the only people I would like to use, and that's the reason I'm bringing them. Um I'd like to have them come here with us because uh there is a little bit of gray area around these uh, you know, around these testing labs. Um and these, I'm very confident um with the reputation that these people have.
Great.
That's important. I I would just recommend then that the, that, uh, cause right now the record is uh full of that being a testing facility. So if that's potentially gonna be a manufacturing facility, that should be clearly shown and the the board be affirmatively approving that, otherwise you're gonna have issues down the road with the building permit.
How can that be when we own that property? That's ours and it's used, and this is a cannabis site, and we're gonna be using it for cannabis. So regardless whether they're testing it or whether I'm manufacturing it, it's the same. It's, we own it. It's ours.
Yeah, but you you've got an entire plan that's showing that that's going to be a testing building. So if it might be something else, that should be clear in the record, because your site plan approval is gonna be for a cultivation building, a dispensary, manufacturing building, and the testing building.
So so maybe they, maybe they can maybe they can put a condition in there that says that if they, if they aren't issued an HCA by the town, which has been very hard for them to get, then we will be using, you know, that for manu- our own manufacturing.
It may require, just a quick trip back here, just to tell us, and then us putting that 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 that's very possible.
Yeah, and if there's a condition in there, that's fine. So if the, if the, you know, the the town doesn't issue an HCA to a testing lab, um then certainly there's a condition in there let the planning board know. That's fine with us.
Yeah, I I don't necessarily see a problem with that being a condition, that that could alternatively be used as a as a manufacturing. Um I don't know that I think it would be good to uh just make sure that there wouldn't be any required changes to the site plan. Uh if it does have to serve for manufacturing, because if there are any significant changes to that, then that would have to come back. Um again, I'm trying to save anybody some some technical issues down the road, that's all.
The building wouldn't change. Uh if they don't build the, it it's, it's just an open shell Butler building, as is. Um they would do, you know, the TIs on the inside, which would be setting up the labs in there. Um if they, if that doesn't come to fruition, um we would be using the exact same footprint. Everything's exactly the same. We would just be using that for manufacturing.
Well, potentially, maybe this is something Mr. Chamberlain, Mr. Furman, and you can could work on in terms of it may not, we're not talking about perhaps a big change in verbiage with the the site plan that it might be for testing or for manufacturing, and that might just cover it right there.
Yeah, if if there wouldn't be exterior changes, then I think the site plan would be fine with some notation. Uh and then it's up to the the planning boards, you know, Anna Lee, you you talked about needing su- to review some information on the interior in these unique projects. Um so presumably, the interior would be different. It's up to the board whether that is relevant um as to which direction this building goes.
Right. Right. Okay, so maybe the certainly uh the three of you could discuss if if we can have more. I mean, I think the planning board would certainly prefer that um things are as clear as possible in the first round of site plan review, so you don't have to come back to us with a change of circumstances. And I think you'd probably prefer that also. Alright, anything else, uh planning board, any other questions? And otherwise, I think we will be continuing this to um our May meeting. Looks like not. Alright, this has been a very um helpful meeting. Thank you all. And also, I think the level of of uh detail has been um just spot on. So, thank you. Good. Alright, then we will um uh continue this to our May meeting. And uh I think that's it for this evening. Is that okay with everyone?
Uh may, could you confirm the date of the May meeting? Is it the first that, cause May is that special month with?
Yes, I got it just here, maybe whether or not Amy's here too, but.
Yes.
Maybe it's on the.
May eighth, I believe. Yes, May eighth.
Six thirty.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Yes, got it. Thank you. Alright, thank you all.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Have a good night.
Alright, bye-bye.
Alright, bye-bye.
So, moving on with our agenda. Um uh we did, as the planning board knows, that record for public record, we did have our focus meeting with uh Peggy Sloan on beginning our chapter one seventy-nine review. I think on one hand, um certainly the feedback I've received, you know, Peggy is very knowledgeable. She's very comforting, and it seemed like.
Anna Lee, I'm I'm sorry to interrupt, but is it possible to move the A and R in front of this? Because people sitting here waiting that I think would really appreciate that, and we're gonna be here anyway, so.
Well, sure, got it. Let's go for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think um Bob Walden is also in waiting for it also. So um if we can have a presentation on the A and R and um uh I could probably also pull up the map if if need be.
Please.
Please.
Okay. Oops, wait a second here, screen share. Oh, no, you guys can't see that, can you? It's upside down too. Well, let's see, remote, how do we, hmm, well, we might just have to be sort of crooked here.
That's good.
That's good, okay. So I'm not sure if you could introduce yourselves and um.
Uh, sure. Good evening. Uh, I'm John Cunningham. My wife, Alene, and I own. The land uh budding Mr. Rodriguez's parcel C that we're asking for the A and R. Says their land of John and Cunningham. It it was originally parcel B, Mr. Rodriguez's land. And was parceled off and we purchased it uh with the belief that it was a building lot. And um, we had a building permit issued to us recently, but then a concern was raised about the minimum lot width. On one boundary line, um, which according to footnote six of the dimensional requirements. Was uh in question, and so uh, we received a letter on March twenty-seventh last Monday. Saying that it's now a non-conforming lot. Um, and so Mr. Rodriguez has agreed to create parcel C, and we have a purchase and sale agreement to buy it. And we're going to combine it with parcel B, and then we will have uh a conforming building lot as. Directed by the building commissioner to help us make sure it is conforming. So the hot, there's a the triangle of about six hundred and nine, eight hundred and sixty-one point five seven square feet, parcel C. Um, and we also have a restriction on the purchase and sale. They say the land will stay as a lawn, no fencing, no driveway, no structures. It will not change its appearance. It will change its ownership only as far as what it's attached to. Um, and so um. And you have the original form A that Alex Rodriguez submitted and um. I'm not sure what else I can tell you. The 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 new boundary line will be conforming with the minimum lot width requirement.
I'm sorry, excuse me, this is Rachel Blaine. I'm caught asking about, is the restriction on the landscaping, or is that in the deed?
It's in our purchase and sale agreement for parcel C, and I'm not sure how it will be carried forward, but we intend to. It's lawn now, it's gonna stay lawn, we're not going.
Yeah.
In our minds.
Just I'm I it it at the sale, at a sale at a time when none of us are gonna be here anywhere.
Yeah. Um, ho- however it is supposed to be done, I will make sure it gets done because.
To the Rodriguez, you see there, I mean, at some point, you can write it out of the deed, but if he wants it in the deed, then that's my curiosity.
You know, our respective attorneys, I'm sure will guarantee that it gets properly handled.
Um, Mr. Walden, um, said, oops, sorry, this is Andrea. I just, I have a question about why it's necessary if it's not. A building lot.
No, it will become a conforming building when we.
But you won't build on it.
Yeah, no, we tried, we had a building permit. We hope to get it back and continue building.
Oh, I see. So the grass and the et cetera.
This this area, we will build our house over in the area that says.
Okay.
None of that area, even, you know, even down towards Gormaki from parcel C is gonna have anything but. One telephone pole I think is still in there, but that's all going to be not driveway, not fence, not structure. And our driver will come in closer to the inflection point when you come up. And the commissioner has our plot plan and he's looked at it and.
Yeah, I can get a little light on it. Um. Originally, when we did the A and R, I mean, I misunderstood the footnote six. That you have to get fifty foot depth from a perpendicular line from all boundaries. And that was brought up during a variance request by Mr. Cunningham with the zoning board. That it was a non-conforming lot, so we had town council look at it. And she agreed. So the solution is to buy that small triangle parcel C. Because of that was the issue, that one line you couldn't measure perpendicularly and and get fifty feet. So now he will be able to. It's a very confusing footnote.
Um, so this was, this was less, this line was less than fifty, excuse me.
Yeah, if you measure ninety degrees off that line towards the road, you had less than fifty. It was the only line that you had that issue, so this is correcting that issue. So that it'll be a conforming lot according to what town council said. And I will give him back his building permit. And he's very anxious to get it back, so.
And and um, I think this is good because it brings footnote six into the zoning review and it needs. Uh, even the attorney in the letter states that the illustrations are confusing, and we went by the illustrations.
And that what confuses it more is footnote seven, which says you discount that area as that. Where you can't get the fifty feet is building area, so that's where I was under the impression originally that it was a building lot, but. It turns out, they think the intention is that you have to be able to get the fifty foot off of all property line. So this is just clarifying that and making sure he has fifty feet measured with a perpendicular line off the boundary.
But the next person will have a better footnote, I hope, in the future.
Yeah, this is, this is why I I brought this up, and I put it on the agenda for your um. Bylaw meeting because it really has just caused no end of trouble.
Thanks, Amy.
All right.
Can I move? Yes, are we?
Yes, uh, endorse.
I move to that we endorse the A and R as presented.
I second that.
Is there any further discussion? All right, uh, let's see, so uh, Andrew or Emily Gaylord.
Emily Gaylord, yes.
Kathy Trava.
Kathy Trava, yes.
Kathleen Sylvester.
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Oh, it's Andrea. I can't see. You're so tiny, Andrea.
Andrea Leeson, yes.
Denise Mason.
Denise Mason, yes. Rachel Blaine, yes.
Emily Wolf, yeah, so the uh A and R is endorsed, and at the end of the meeting, you all can sign it with the Mylar Sharpie.
Yeah, actually, can I just mention, I uh forgot to put out a Sharpie, however. Um, there is one, I left our office open so that someone could go in it just just for this reason. Um, you'll find one on my desk, um, or if Denise knows where the supply closet is. I apologize for that. I just forgot that you'd need a Sharpie to sign it, and I guess Anna Lee, maybe you can come in tomorrow and sign it.
Oh, he's got a Sharpie. There we go.
Special Sharpie.
Oh, okay.
Wow, thank you very much for. Sounds like there's a lot in the background, so.
I mean, there are, there are Sharpies in the kitchen and the metal cabinet if you can't find one in the office.
Anna Lee, can we sign it now instead of at the end of the meeting so that these people can leave if they want to?
Oh, they don't need to see it.
I'm perfectly trusting that you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And yeah, Anna Lee will need to sign, so uh, she can pick it up later.
Got me through this, and I appreciate them.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So let's see, just this was just brief with our one seventy-nine review. I was just reminded. Planning for tonight's meeting, um, that I believe the one seventy-nine review and some of. I I had, I did have a follow-up conversation with Peggy, and then also she sent me a few questions that were quite technical about the maps. And um, it was just such a reminder of needing and wanting to have a planner. So I did send a um, an email tonight to the members of the select board. I mean, they have been very, very supportive of planner. And um Casey and Brenda also have been wonderful with sort of juggling different funds. To see if we can at least get a thirty-hour position, but it's not over till it's over. So I've asked the select board if there's anything more that we can do to help lobby for that. I believe um next week, and I don't know if anyone has that in front of them. I can look on my calendar here, the the. Um, final, all right, um, a select board meeting, they're talking about the budget again. And then I think, I believe also the continuing finance committee meetings are talking about the budget, so. I don't know if anybody has any suggestions. Uh, we've kind of morphed from FERCog one seventy-nine review into still really working for the planner.
Um, Anna Lee, I know that um, the finance committee had already voted yes, and so did the select board. The select board said that they wanted a forty-hour position, um, starting forty hours, and so it may have to be reduced. But I think the general consensus was in support for that for a planner.
Oh, I I I think you're absolutely on target. It's uh, you know, quote, may have to be reduced. And what might be happening in those last minute conversations and whether or not there's anything more we can do to.
Um, you know, attend the meeting, I guess, but at this point, I don't know. And I thi- I think there was, there was talk about having to reduce. I mean, uh, Brenda and Casey work really hard on that. I mean, I'm on the CIPC, and then I uh went to one of the joint meetings. And I think one um wildcard was a CPA um application that had not been submitted at. You know, on time, but I think that has been accepted so far. So I think it's really just gonna come down to town meeting and voting on each.
Oh, well, yeah, if that's the case, then if as much as um. Those of us can really lobby to get friends, neighbors, and countrymen to, and women to uh come to town meeting and vote for it. Don't say that lightly, but really getting people to come to town meeting, just town meeting.
I think uh the planner and ADU regulations.
Yes.
Get a good turnout.
Yes.
And I was just thinking similar, um, Kathy and Rachel and I have been working on material around ADUs. That I think I can probably send around to, am I allowed to email that to everyone or do it, should I submit it for the next meeting packet?
Oh, no, yeah, you can probably BCC it. BCC is good, but yeah.
Actually, um, what Casey was saying to me today was that if you send it to me, it's okay. The way to to distribute things is you guys send it to me, and then I send it out, and somehow that makes it okay. It's and also it's good that I have a record of it to keep it. Um, you know, that way if we need to go back, I've got all the records in one place. So Emily, if you want to send that to me, I will distribute it.
Um, and maybe we want to create something similar for the planner.
This is a handout to give to town.
That would be wonderful.
Yeah, I just think that um. One of the things that I think I'm very cognizant of is what happens in this room and in this meeting can feel really above a lot of heads. Sometimes our own, I think, and it's a planner's whole job to make this information accessible and understandable and. I don't, we were just swooning over um like drawings of what a downtown could look like, which is exactly what a planner would do for us. So I think in terms of materializing so much of what we want for this town, a planner would help us do that. And maybe if people understand that that's going to connect some of the vision to something that they can actually visualize. That might be helpful, so.
I think that would be great.
Okay, um, Em- Emily, I just have a question. So in doing that, I mean, are you going to do it on one document? Which would be better than multiple documents, maybe? I don't know. And if so, I was going to say, please add the permitting software because that is another critical piece. That will help us out, because it's gonna help Amy out, it's gonna help Bill, it's gonna help everyone out.
So so our suggestion is one document with ADUs, planner, and permitting software on it.
And and it.
To make, to make the town work more efficiently.
Yes. And a short blurb, and I mean, if.
Yeah, for each.
And I mean.
I know, I'm I'm, my wheels are turning around.
We, yeah, I mean, we can always make suggestions on what to include in a blurb.
That would be very helpful. So why don't I do this? I'll send Amy what we have so far for the ADU, just so that you all have something to react to. And then um Denise, would you send me just some bullet points on the permanent software?
Sure, because I'm gonna get that from Amy if I don't already have that.
And then um, maybe Anna Lee could send me some planner bullet.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
Um, cool. And then I'll I'll think of some way to make this resonate with our residents.
I think the you might want to mention could maybe help us get funding.
Oh, absolutely.
Grant, how much does a planner cost? Well, how much can they save is really.
Yes, and I think it's all about investing in the future, right? This is the idea that we want to.
And the planner is not just for the planning board. That is the important piece.
Well, all of these things should be for the town.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Well, but the other boards are gonna also.
It's not just self-serving. Yeah, yeah.
Excellent. Good. Oh, I'm so glad. That's great. Adjourned. Excuse me. Um, I will, let's see here, screen share and bring up our planning board policy, which actually um. As of last, um, let's see, where am I here? Actually, this green shirt, I don't know how it went, anyway. You can see that? Zach, British, good enough. Um, so. The the. Beginning point for this was recognition that, gosh, you know, two years ago. At several different meetings, we talked about how planning board documents needed to be distributed or can uh. Send to us two to three business days before our meeting. You know, and we were, is it two, is it three? And who knows it other than us? And it put, certainly put Amy and the town staff in in a bind when they're trying to tell people, no, you can't. Don't expect to talk with the planning board because you didn't send the stuff out in time. So in any event, um, talking with Ken Kamea, the planner from PBPC. Um, certainly, a lot of other boards do have standard operating procedures, so have really, really. Um, condensed what a lot of the other boards have, but statement that this would be something that would be um posted. I mean, it's it's in town clerk and whatnot, but it would be posted on the town website. And um pieces of it then could also bleed over into our applications. Um, one of the things that just changed within the last month. With the la- within the last time that everyone here has seen the draft of this policy is our Supreme Judicial Court ruling. That during public comment, uh, members of the public need not be courteous, considerate, respectful. Um, they do need to be courteous, considerate, respectful during our business meeting. But if we are having public comment periods, um. They don't need to be. Um, that's what the Supreme Judicial Court just said within the last month. So I have. Adapted this according to that, and in fact, part of what Ken has said, as well as my understanding from town council. Is that so much of this is at this chair's discretion, which I think also is very challenging. Because we can't show favoritism, so I think it needs to say in the policy that it would be at the chair's dis- discretion. Even to, even to say that we could have public comment.
You have a question. So the doc, how about there, did I miss something? Because the document I have says February twenty-first.
Yeah, yeah, so as of tonight, what I did basically was just this section, change just this section.
Okay, so you'll send that out to us.
Yeah, yes.
Well, it would be helpful, you know, and, okay, you know what? I I know this is a little bit of a sidebar, but while we're on the subject, I fa- find it extremely confusing. And sorry, Amy, I know that there were multiple times that you had to change the agenda, but I had downloaded the whole packet. And then all of a sudden, all the changes were made. And so in order for me to understand what changes were made, I had to look through the entire packet again. So in the future, does it make sense to, if there's a change, just to note what the change was, to say addition to the packet, this is it? Or reduction or or something, instead of sending out the whole thing again, I I don't know what others feel, think.
Yeah, that would.
But I I just, I was having a hard. But I, I just, I was having a hard time because there were like five different changes. And I understand that's not the problem. It's just that it was like having to read through the whole thing. I mean, look through all the documents again, because there were like thirty-two pages.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
I tried to uh, describe in my emails what had been changed. Maybe I um, but you know, originally, the idea of the packet was because people had too many different documents. And they, you know, and that was a problem because they were looking at this one, looking at that one. You know, it seems like usually that there really shouldn't be this many changes. This, this was unusual, I have to say. I mean, I can try and keep the changes down. And you know, I can send separate documents. But like I said, when I, you know, when it used to be separate documents, people complained that they didn't like having all the different documents.
No, I think that, this is Andrea, I think a packet is great. But if you could also say, please disregard packet sent on this date at this time, so that we know that the le- the later one is more um, up to, you know, accurate, complete.
Yeah, probably I, I should have renamed it's uh, you know, continue to rename the revisions, which I think I do. So I apologize for that.
No, what Denise is maybe requesting, Denise, is that this packet updates the minutes of February sixth.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, like I said, I'm, I'm happy to do that. But I'm just saying that, you know, the reason that I started with the packets as a single issue is that people complained about having too many, you know, didn't like having different documents. So it's sort of a.
No, thanks. We appreciate the packet.
Yeah, we liked that.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, so um, although we can, I mean, we can even vote on this at our next meeting if we need to. But that, you know, this is in fact, sort of, you know, we don't really have much leeway about this other than that we've said that uh, we want people to be two to three minutes in, in length and recognized by the chair. Um, one of the things that some of the other agenda, uh, some of the other towns have mentioned is that, and obviously, um, and we've had this, members of the public can request certain things be on the agenda. So this is up for discussion and may not, uh, you know, a lot of the towns say, if you want to submit something for the agenda, you need to submit it within, you know, five business days prior to the board's meeting. And the agenda request may or may not be approved. How do people feel about that?
Oh, uh, yes, I mean, we do that with the select board as well, don't we? If we want the select board to discuss some issue.
Right.
We, we make a request of the select board to include it on an agenda for a meeting.
But at the bottom, it says it may or may not be discussed. I think on the bottom of the select board.
Well, it says agenda requests may or may not be approved at the discretion of the chair.
Well, that's good.
And we're saying that they need to be submitted five business days in advance of the meeting. I mean, is that a reasonable time, people feel?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't feel like I need five business days personally, but.
Well, we're saying for people in the, of the public.
Amy does. Okay, then that's fine. I just, I'm not going to read it before Thursday. Anyway, usually, so. So five days is what, Tuesday, the week before, correct? Yeah.
I think agenda items would be for the chair anyway. You know, they would go to the chair, the chair can decide what's on the agenda. And then, you know, then it would go out to you guys in the agenda.
Yeah, so Amy, you need five days?
Well, this is the problem that we just had with the, with the packet that came and kept having changes and changes and changes. If we set the agenda five days before, and then someone asks us to add something two days, three days before, now it's not on the agenda, then she has to redo the packet.
Right, so if we didn't have it five days in advance, if we had it.
Then it can't, then it could go to the next meeting.
But I mean, the problem that came up here is because we require five days.
Which problem?
Well, no, the five days, this is just a proposal. Right now, we don't have, I mean, this is, again, is primarily is people request, hmm, doesn't say this, but request for agenda items should be submitted. Yeah, no later than five business days. That's, that's, that's something new. We've not really talked about this before.
It currently says two to three, is that what you're saying?
No, the two to three are what we've had before. That's for if documents are submitted, that's a different topic. This is just agenda items.
I feel like it is very reasonable to say if you didn't submit something more than five days in advance, it just goes to the next meeting.
Right, but what, but why does it keep getting amended then? Because we're not sticking to that, obviously.
Well, I don't think it's.
This is, this is something new. This is, we have not done this in the past. This would be new.
Okay, no, I mean, that's fine. I thought you were saying that, I, I didn't get it. Because I kept, I, I thought we had a, a deadline and then we keep getting amendments. And I'm like, wait a minute, I thought we had a deadline. We're not sticking to it. So I misunderstood.
Well, that's why it's nice to have, I guess, something in writing because our deadline really has to do with submission of documents. And at times we said two days prior to a business meeting, at other times we've said three days. Um, and it's not really written down anywhere for a John Furman or a Berkshire Design to know that they need to give us our, the peer review document, not the afternoon of.
Right, right. Or the Friday afternoon, Monday.
Something already. I thought we already had something.
We do. We, yeah, I'll, I'll mention and then Amy can, we have, we had had something Kathy, but it's been quite loose. Is it two days? Is it three days?
Now, we, we have something, you know, it's, it's very specific. It's in the minutes and I brought it up after, I forget what meeting, how long ago and documents came in too quickly. But I, I believe it's the Tuesday. I'd have to look it up, but it's in your minutes.
I bet we did this, sorry.
We sent it out, it was very specific.
But it was in the minutes, the public doesn't know this.
Yeah, no, I, I, I understand that. I'm just saying that, that you do have something very specific. The other thing, can I just say that, that the changes, the reasoning, you know, so many packets and agendas, th- this was internal issues. It's not because people were sending things to us late. These were all internal, that, you know, things happen, things change.
Annalee editing things and things missed, yeah. So for submission of documents, as, as Amy has said, I think it was August of twenty twenty.
Right.
We said two to three days. Well, is it two? Is it three? What do we want? You know, and this is, this is for our discussion right now. Because then, then we'll have it in, you know, we'll have it in a, a planning board document that will be on the website. And, you know, potentially even also in some of our applications.
I always thought it was Thursday before the meeting that I didn't, I mean, I thought we changed Thursday.
I, I believe, as I said, I looked it up in the minutes from that meeting and you were very specific. It wasn't two or three, it was very specific. It was Tuesday or Wednesday before the meeting. And I will look that up and again, and I will send it out to all of you. So, I mean, you can certainly change it if you want to, but I'm just saying that there, there is something that was wrote it on.
That's what we're talking about right now. If it's three days, three full business days. So that would be the morning of Thursday, right?
No.
Yeah, three full business days, Thursday, Friday, Monday.
Monday is a business day. All day, all day, a lot of business.
Can I make another suggestion, Annalee? One of the last emails that I got today was, I think you made some amendment to the minutes. And can we just? Can we just amend them here instead of doing that? Because that was yet another one. And you know what? I didn't even look at that.
Sure.
Because by the, by the time I looked at that on my email, I thought, I don't have time to look at this one. So if we could just, you know, save any kind of amendments to the minutes that we all look at.
Sure.
Change during the meeting, which is probably, I mean, I don't even know what change was made. I think you said it was in formatting.
Yes, yeah, it was just miscellaneous stuff. So anyway, back to submission of documents. What do we want to have posted on our website, maybe part of the applications? What do we want to have as a, as our policy going forward? Is this?
I have a question for Amy. How long does it take her to um, process things?
Yeah.
Or make copies? That's really part of the issue. It's for, so that the staff is not overwhelmed at the last minute. Like in other words, we want you to make the, you tell us.
You tell us what you need, a time you need.
Eggs, um. Yeah, if things come in, you know, if we want to make the deadline for you guys to be, you know, I've been getting things out to you, I guess by the end of the day, Thursday. So you have the, the two, you know, working days and, and the weekend, obviously, to look at stuff.
End of your workday on Thursday, four o'clock-ish. If we tell people that they can get them to us on Thursday and they come in Thursday at five.
Yeah, no, 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 we don't want to tell people that they can come in Thursday. Because yeah, that's, and even Wednesday, they can, um.
Well, plus, we do sometimes not have meetings on Monday, so I think just stating.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, you're probably right. X number of business days, you know, we, three or four.
I see five. Like, people are submitting documents. It's not like this is a surprise.
Three or five and, you know, every now and then, yeah, that's, yeah, I think, yeah, five, five would certainly be more than enough.
Well, when we think back to um, the park, we were getting documents that afternoon.
Yeah.
Peer review sometimes is not ready. Certainly, peer review might not be ready five days prior to a meeting. I don't know.
Well, I, I think what we can do is may, you know, have a general rule and we can make exceptions. You know, for specific cases like the, you know, John's A and R. We, he didn't have all the documents ready on time, but this was really sort of an emergency situation. And because part of the problem had been caused by uh, us. You know, I, I was fine with him giving me, you know, he, he had the plan on Friday. Um, and giving me the, the signed um, A and R. You know, later that I, we made an exception in that case. And I think maybe the exceptions, and I can run it past the chair.
But. I mean, A and R exception also, if we don't deal with it within, I think it isn't at thirty days, it's. I mean, I, I know that I, as the chair, would like not to make exceptions.
Yeah. I mean, I, the song is like everything on Thursday. I don't care what we do. I mean, it's whatever Amy needs to get us the stuff by Thursday. So do you need it in by Wednesday? Do you need it in by Tuesday? That's totally your call, in my opinion. I just want it by Thursday.
Yeah.
Important that we make the decision and we put it on the website under the planning board. And we also put it on our applications too, so that people know right up front.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I've got this wrong here, where it says Wednesday morning for a board meeting on Monday. It would be Thursday morning for a board meeting on Monday, right? That's three full business days. Thursday, Friday, Monday.
I would like to, I would like to call it Tuesday night because people will interpret Monday morning as like, well, you know, ten's morning, eleven, if.
Say Wednesday, four o'clock. Yeah, let's, let's call it.
Yeah. Was that enough time for you, Amy?
Yep.
Yeah. That could, that gives, that gives everyone ample time.
Honestly, four and four.
Yeah.
I agree. Sort of close the business.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that's it. So. Do you want, can we approve this policy now? Or do you want to look at it more and have it back on the agenda next month?
I'm ready to approve it.
Okay.
I make the motion, we approve the document as amended.
I second it, Rachel Blaine. That was Kathy Sylvester.
There, any further discussion? Um, so Emily Gaylord.
Emily Gaylord, yes.
Kathy Vitroba?
Vitroba, yes.
Um, Kathy Sylvester?
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Andrea Liebson?
Yes. Andrea Liebson.
Denise?
Yes.
Rachel Blaine, yes.
Emily Wolfco, yes. So it's approved, six zero zero.
Send us out the amended, the amended version so that I have the correct.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah.
Is this really the URL for the anti-hate statement in the code of conduct?
Oh, in the policy?
Yeah.
It's.
Is it really?
Is that the link?
Dot U S slash search, question mark, search phrase equals code.
Well, I guess it should be. Um. Oh, let's make sure. I'll make sure.
I just wonder.
Those, yeah, I mean, this would be, yes. Code of Conduct and the select board and a hate statement, yep. And the open meeting laws, yeah, those should be, yes. I mean, I can't. Well, let me do it now.
Label it, it with the name, and then you just hit the name.
Yeah, like hyperlink the.
Yes, yeah, hyperlink, yeah, exactly. And I know that.
Well, then, shall we, can I, I'm not into hyperlink. So uh, uh, Emily, can you hyperlink for me? I'll send it to you.
I can too. I know how to hyperlink.
Well, while I'm doing other things.
Amy, do you know how to hyperlink?
Sure she does.
Yeah, so you need me, you send me the document and I'll make whatever needs to be a hyperlink, a hyperlink.
Cool. All right. Okay, so that'll go to Amy and said, thank you. Thank you very much, Amy. Okay, cool. Woo, um, stops. Are you still seeing it?
No, no. Clear. We just see you.
And us.
I'm Kathy. There we go. Alrighty. Um, let's see, do we have anyone? I don't even know if we have anyone still on um, Zoom, but any public comments?
Nope.
No other business reasonably anticipated reports?
Uh, open space, I can make a report. Um, a working group of the open space committee met today. We are um, taking seriously this idea of having greater communication with uh, uh, residents of Deerfield. And so we are creating a one-sheet handout for the annual meeting to talk about the results of the survey, uh, the open space survey, to tell people um, uh, what we are, what, what Deerfield has as a result of the survey in part, and to say what we are planning to do next.
Excellent.
Cool. I have a short report too.
Yes, Denise. Boy, communication is happening. That's great.
Okay, so I think, I, I forget what date, but a couple of weeks ago, Governor Healy and Lieutenant Governor Driscoll came out there at William Sugarhouse. And they were amazing. And I think that, I think that um, they're, they're very receptive to um, what we're doing out here. And they created a new, I forget what it's called, a new rural something or other to represent rural, rural community. And our news, what is the Secretary of Agriculture is a Deerfield native. She wants to be in the parade, which is cool. But um.
Gosh, Ashley Sears, Semple or Stemple?
Oh, no, not.
Semple?
No, 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 no. Ashley Sears.
And, and she's married and she's named, her name is.
Yes, anyway, she went, she went to grade school with my son. She's very.
And my daughter.
Yeah, so anyway, so she wants to do that. And then I did, I did, I handed out postcards, our CCI postcards to, oh boy. Anyway, one of, one of Healy's representatives, um, let's see, so that, that was really good. The um, I'm on the library building committee, so we're talking about building, the bill, I mean, looking at the building, looking at what they're doing. Changing, instead of going backwards, it's going to go the addition to the south. So we can add solar to it, which is really important. Yeah, um, let's see, what else is going on? Took a tour of the eighteen twenty-one building with, for the potential senior center with weightily in Sunderland. And. And um, sorry.
I don't know the eighteen twenty-one building.
Oh, I'm sorry, the church. So I, I feel like we're sort of back in square one with that. But you know, we, we have to figure that out because we've been writing, we're in the process of writing grant funding for that. So we've got to get together and have a little better communication with them. Um, I also attended a DOT meeting and that is, that's really important because our town common, the problem is, is that Shugalov Street and Park Street and going up to Conway Street is still owned by the state. And they want us to take it over. We don't want to take it over until we camera to see with the infrastructure underneath, which is very important. I know that the cost of doing the town common has escalated to the two and, I mean, another couple hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, we're sort of, so it's still in conversation with them and I think that they're going to, uh, give us a price on how much it would be to camera everything. So that's still a, a conversation in progress. Um, let's see, what else? Uh, so, and in the meantime, uh, Tim Hillchi, I worked with him a little bit on, well, he did most of the writing. I was like his support system. And wrote, um, for three different things. He wrote to, um, to Warren, to McGovern and to. Marky, um, for an earmark for the eighteen eight, eighteen eighty-eight building, which was the prior senior center grade school. Um, and that's the plan is to hopefully move this building, the municipal building over there. Offices, so I'm looking for an earmark for about five million dollars. And the last thing is, um, on Wednesday, I've got, um, people from VHB that are coming out to do. A tour of the campus for, um, some grant money that we got through complete neighborhoods. And after that, they'll be meeting with CCI, with the, the committee. And talking about how they can have, you know, better communication in town among, you know, the people, so that. So Deerfield residents know what's going on, so that's it.
Emily can do a flyer.
Yeah, I know, I know. No, as a matter of fact, they do have a graphic designer on board. We don't have to do any reporting for that and we don't have to handle any money for that, so it's, we've got fifty thousand dollars worth of. Of, um, people to help us.
That's great.
That's it. It's a lot.
Any other reports?
I could report on the CPC, which we're. Voting on designating money for, um. The senior housing project, which they're hoping to purchase some property to expand that piece of property. And get a feasibility study going, so they're going to, they have applied for some, some money from the CPC, we. I expect that to pass. Um, the eighteen eighty-eight building did request some money, but their, um, application is really not quite complete. So we may, we, we are gonna table that until they get us more information and probably present that at the fall town meeting. And there was a late applicant, which did cause a lot of. Stir, which was the select board who didn't submit their application in time, along with the superintendent. To resurface the tennis courts. So that was quite contentious, because it was two and a half weeks late. We did vote four to three to allow them to submit, but it's, uh, didn't come without a cost. Of the resignation of the chair of our committee, so unfortunately.
Think he was going to leave at the end of this year.
But he's. But he's, but he, um, yeah.
Effective immediately resigned after that.
So can I ask, so the resurfacing of the tennis courts is, are other towns, yeah, the towns going to their CPC as well?
Yes, so the, the budget from Frontier is gonna pay for two hundred thousand and they're asking for a hundred thousand and that's gonna be, um. Hopefully covered by the four towns, so I don't know how the other towns have voted, so maybe Denise, you know?
No, I mean, um. They asked for forty-eight thousand from us and I think we, we typically do fifty percent and the other towns do a lesser amount. I think it goes.
But we don't have that much money in the CPC for, for that project, so, um, they're gonna have to get some of that money elsewhere.
You have twenty-four thousand dollars left into the recreation part of the C, CPC, so the rest would have to come out of something else in the budget. And you know, the problem was, is that there was, cause I'm, I'm on the CIPC, the Capital Improvement Plan Committee. And, um, so we went over that and I think there was miscommunication. Between Frontier and, and our select board and they apologized profusely. The issue is, is that our budget is so incredibly tight this year, I'm sure, you know, like many other years, that, um. If we had to pull that out of our budget, we may have to reduce something else, like the planner or who knows what. So, you know, it, it was, it was. It was a very difficult situation and I certainly understood the frustration for the CPC in that. So, you know, hopefully that will not happen again. You know, that, that miscommunication and I think that is sort of the whole purpose of CCI. Of having, you know, better communication among all the boards in town.
I think, you know, Alan's worried about setting a precedent.
Yeah.
And I was worried about making the taxpayer pay for their mistake. So, um, it was a very difficult vote for everybody, I think.
Yeah.
Wow, okay. Alright, that's sobering, sobering, right? Um, just a brief update, which ties into the planner. This perhaps should have been other business not reasonably anticipated. Um, there is a concern about this set right, set right solar, um, there were a, a number of conditions. This is interesting. This is sort of philosophical for the planning board. Number of conditions in the set right solar decision. Uh, some of the conditions having to do with, uh, notices that need to go to the fire department and to the. Select board and to the planning board and whatnot. And, um, to a large extent, it. Appears that a lot of those conditions have not been met, so kind of who has responsibility to oversee that? So I'm gonna be talking, I've asked, uh, Chris Nolan, our assistant town administrator, if he can sit down with me and chat. Because the specific piece for a condition for the planning board of noting. When, um, the, the facility, this, the solar is going online. That's just one.
Yeah, I, I don't think they've gone online yet, though. I think that's why we haven't.
But there are other things that they haven't done yet and who's checking to make sure that happens and it was a planning board condition, so anyway. It's a, that's, you know. Wouldn't it, that's certainly something that a planner could oversee with a lot of our, our decisions.
Hey, Annalee, that also, that also goes into the importance of the planning software, because if something like that. It's the fire department that needs to be notified, the select board needs to be, we need to be, and if it's in that permitting software, it automatically goes. Amy knows and she can notify everyone and it makes things so much smoother.
Right, that'd be great, okay. Um, we did have some mail. Um, it's, it was interesting and, uh, it seems that there's quite a bit of activity going on in our adjoining towns with. You know, Whately wants to put in nine residential units, uh, with renovating, uh, an old school building. Um, Shelburne wants to put in some more affordable housing and cha-, actually change their affordable housing bylaws. Um, uh, Greenfield, oh my gosh, they have a ZBA meeting with four different public hearings, but. Um, also looking at increasing, uh, thirty-six dwelling units in a, the area that's zoned for twenty-four. Putting in five multifamily dwelling units. So there's lots going on in our adjacent towns of trying to increase. Housing inventory, so we're trying to do the same, right?
Hey, Annalee, can I just make note, I was at, I was at another thing, I was at the, I went with Pat Ryan to the Franklin County League of Women's. Women Voters. At the Fiveide Fox, which is very cool. I'd never been there, so I definitely want to go back. But it was great, because Joe Comford was there, Natalie Blay, and then, um, what's her name, Susanna?
Whipps.
Whipps, who is another amazing person.
She's an amazing lady.
Well, no.
She is wonderful. And so each one of them, I mean, they're, they're just, they're so great and so supportive. And that came up, housing came up and different things and they were so, they said, please email me and they understand. The issue with not having enough housing or be, you know, selling your home and not being able to buy into the same neighborhood. So that, you know, and, and they said, please email us, let us know what's going on, so.
Nice. Alright, um, I don't know that we have anything else. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Ed, I would like to move that. We adjourn, second it. Eight thirty-three.
That's Rachel and Kathy Sylvester, yes, any discussion? Alright, uh, Emily Gaylord.
Emily Gaylord, yes.
Kathy Wetraba.
Wetraba, yes.
Kathy Sylvester.
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Andrew Leibson.
Andrew Leibson, yes.
Denise Mason.
Denise Mason, yes.
Rachel Blaine, yes.
Emily Wolfco, yes, adjourned at eight thirty-two PM.